Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brianna, are you ready? We'll get you in and out here if you want.
I'll not, but he's fine. Okay, do you guys stand?
Sure, if you want.
Sure.
Will you come up here a little closer?
Yeah, I'd rather come up. I'm pretty casual, if that's okay. But I only want to take a couple minutes of your time today. My name's Brianna Stinger and I work for RQAW, which is an engineering and architecture firm in Fishers. We've got about 150 employees, been around since the 1950s, so have done all sorts of projects. We work with a ton of different communities. So it can be anywhere from population size 400 to 100,000 people. So we've worked with a lot of different communities and I think we understand there are a little more complexities when it comes to smaller rural communities, just because there's a little more barriers such as funding. That's typically an obstacle that smaller communities have. So we've definitely been successful in helping communities secure funding too. So that's something that we've been able to help with. But like I said, engineering and architecture is a full service. On the engineering side, it's your transportation design, trails, it can be a park as well, survey, mechanical, electrical plumbing, all sorts of engineering. And then on the architecture side, it's your police stations, fire stations, and town halls, community centers. So that's a little bit about RQAW. But I was able to introduce myself to Brandy a couple of months ago and I appreciate it. So just wanted to introduce myself. And that's true. I have some swag. I don't know if everyone wants it.
Well, yeah, what do you got?
But I know some people don't like it and it ends up in the trash. That's what happens to me when a salesperson knocks on my door, I'm not gonna lie. So I do have some stuff if you would like to look at it at your free time. But if not, I can also just give you a business card too, just in case you ever need anything.
Well, I'd like one at least.
So you might as well leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, I can leave it. Yeah, I can pass it out. And I can give... Well, I'm not Taylor Swift, I'm not that cool. But here, I can pass it out if you want. If you don't want it, that's fine. But I can give you a business card too for the table. Would you like one? Would you like one?
I can use that.
Okay, that works. Would you like one? Either of you? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Marketing materials are expensive.
They are expensive and, yeah, like I said, I throw them all in the trash. Brandy, do you want one?
I'll take the ones left and put it in with my folder for tonight. So I know how to get hold of you too, so I appreciate your time.
Yeah, of course. And I have a business card too. You don't mind me passing it out, just in case you ever need anything, I'd be happy to reach out.
So you do streets?
We do, yeah.
You do wastewater?
We do, yeah. Wastewater, drinking water, stormwater as well.
Okay, I see a roundabout. You do roundabouts?
Yeah, yeah. Well, our, like I said, our office is in Fishers. Hamilton County loves their roundabouts.
Uh-huh.
So...
I go over there just to drive them.
Oh, do you?
Oh, yeah.
We live on business cards by them.
Well, I'm from Vincent's originally and I remember when we got our first roundabout, there was a day where there was a police chief, I really seem to hear the police chief. Hi, I'm Brianna, was helping people navigate the roundabout all day. He was out there all day helping people and showing them how to use it.
Well, that's nice.
Yes, so we've done them, but I know a lot of communities don't like them, which is funny.
I'd love to have them. I think it's hot on Jefferson Street is the perfect spot for them.
Yeah, so you're over in Fishers?
Yes, we are. We're over in Fishers. We got an office in Vincent's as well.
Okay, Vincent's, Fisher's...
And then one in Lepore.
Houston, Texas, what's that?
Well, okay, so we have a larger company. It's called DCCM and their headquarters is in Houston. But RQAW employees are in Fishers, most of them are. And then we really only service Indiana. RQAW does, so... Yeah, it's not like someone from Houston is working on a project here.
Well, they know what you're doing, doesn't matter. But, yeah, all right. This is good swag.
I'm glad you like it. I should have brought our bouncy balls. Those are fun and kids like those.
Right at Park's Alley.
Maybe next time, bring a bouncy ball.
Yeah, we are fond of pins.
Pins too, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'll stick around if it's all right with you, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Well, let's do a bid opening on Jefferson, on Jefferson Street.
First bid I have is joint. Double.
Double seal.
I don't see that. I already turned it open too.
Minimum was 17,500?
Twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two.
Who's that one from?
Brian Williams. Twenty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
What's that zone?
Commercial.
It is commercial. Well, I'll make a motion to the board would like.
A second.
For the highest bid.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we doing the deed on that or is somebody due the deed on that?
Williams.
Anytime you're ready.
Okay, hats off. Got planes there for 658, 71602. Do you have any questions?
Oh, oh, a couple. Yeah, we did a clarify rebuild 23,220. Doug, that was probably last year. We had, was that from last year deal we did that?
On...
We probably approved that last year, clarify.
Yes, choices, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so why did we have to lower the water main on Martin? What was the deal? We lowered the 12-inch water?
It was exposed.
It was exposed, okay. Okay, that's one question I had.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear any of that, so...
I do have a, just a salary ordinance update. Like to replace title of special projects with an administrative assistant. The job has remained open for the timeframe currently. And also updating the wage salary down for a starting utility laborer that Doug is currently and still taking applications on.
Okay, what do you mean?
Well, to make that wage to where a starting laborer would be in the event that there's any additional license. And we'll approach that at that time. But just to get this updated where it stands currently incorrect.
Okay, I'll move. I'll second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
I have bank threats for December's balance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
And then I have some other stuff I have to do. If you eye them, I'll say.
Okay, well, I'd say, Bill, if you're ready.
Okay, Troy, Brady Walters, Troy Nichols and myself want to advance driver's license here at driving education. Very fortunate, which means all full-time officers have now received that training, which helps us investigate impaired drivers. We have radar recertification coming up on Thursday. And on Sunday, we're going to do an awards presentation. And also, we'd like to ask to do two more of those memorial waysigns. And that would probably be approximately $250. And we'd like to do this for the two town marshals that were killed in the line of duty. They weren't from Rockville, but they were in the county and this is the county seat. And anybody that comes to the county seat would get to see the memorial way for those two town marshals that also were killed in the line of duty.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Where do you plan on putting them?
I'd like to put them on Jefferson and High Street, so the opposite corner of the towns with those marines. Jessup, or no, Jessup, what was that? That was Jetson and Diamond. Yeah, Jetson and Diamond.
New Diamond.
Up we go.
And then I only have one other thing that I need to pass out. Spoke with Alseb Chevrolet after speaking with Alan and Doug. Speaking with Alan, he doesn't necessarily feel comfortable working on the emergency vehicles.
Working on in what way, Bill? I mean, service or other?
Well, talking to Alan, I think one thing is servicing him, you know, we go at a high rate of speed. I don't like, he likes working on emergency vehicles and thinking, you know, what if something happens? I don't want to, you know, have a sleepless night where maybe I was at fault or something like that. Just that, there's a lot of, I think, responsibility that comes with that that could actually make somebody a little nervous when they're dealing with that.
There's a lot more electrical stuff on it.
And the other thing is, there's a lot of changes in some of the newer cars that I don't think he's...
Right.
Probably with a warranty, they, you might need to use a certified technician on a newer vehicle, I would think. Or should maybe. I said, warranty coverage.
And I'm not saying go with Alseb, but right now I'm just presenting this to you as an option that I know Alan doesn't necessarily know some of the stuff with some of the brand-new vehicles like this and...
Well, they keep getting more complex.
They do.
Part of it was what the last break?
Yeah.
That one he pulled out, you got to unhook battery, you gotta do this and that. We had to take it down to Chevy to get it cleared because of all the sensors and stuff on it.
That's a pretty heavy discount.
I understand.
Yeah, it is. That's a very nice discount for the town. So this would be all the fleet vehi- the lease vehicles, the titles, everything.
Yes.
So just for the law enforcement of the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna, well, ask that question. I'm just curious, who maintains our fire trucks?
They do. They have Mike Brown. Comes in and does all the...
Okay. All right, I'm, we in a motion?
Second.
I'll move, you say?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Well, thanks, Bill.
Oh, just note, your fuel's 1,258 last month. That's staying under budget.
Trying to.
That's good.
Thank you.
Nick, do you got anything?
Just a little bit, not much. We had a trial set for Thursday, but I was just talking to Bill and that person's made a lot of complaints. So they got one thing left to do, so we're gonna give them a little bit more time on that. That was out on 36 by Quickco gas station. There's about four other ones set for trials in the coming month or so. Bill and I have been through. We did have one of them that died. There's no state open yet, so it's a limbo now. And that's really all I have report-wise.
Oh, that's good. Can I ask him a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Did you have any time to look at F food and beverage thing, the tax, or talk to anyone?
I have not, no. I did have it written down here to do that.
And I submitted my report last year by March 1st. It was a very easy Excel spreadsheet, implement the information.
Far as showing how it was spent, right.
But I just don't see how it benefits us in any way whatsoever, though, in looking through it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any benefit. It's just made the curiosity, what in the world, they, you know, can they, will they share who they want to share with?
Yeah.
I had a conversation with the guy from the DOR, because he contacted me, because I hadn't submitted it back to him. And I told him that, actually, I was waiting on some more information. He was going to reach out to legal counsel, because I explained to him that I couldn't really find where where they were going to be providing any more information than what I'm already obtaining. I can email the DOR and they'll send me a report now, so how is that any different? The only thing he could come up with is maybe I wasn't supposed to be getting the report, but he couldn't say that for sure.
But that's not what it is, though. They're just wanting an enforceable confidentiality agreement, so there's repercussions to a report that we're already entitled to have.
So I'm waiting on them to send more detailed explanations to their IT code, I guess. So when I get those off-ordained to you and then...
Okay. But no, I haven't talked to them as of yet. I just...
I think you're gonna get the same conversation that I had, so...
I'm certain I probably will. Okay.
That it?
Yep.
Park, that it?
Yeah, right now, anyway.
You ready, Doug?
Yeah. So, oh, I have a whole lot here, but the poles on Market Street have been removed. Was able to get in and get them out of there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we've got some trees down on Jefferson and then the two that were dead in the playgrounds at the park have been removed. And we got a couple more limbs down there. We're still gonna be working on, but that is done. We did have another trouble, another lift station. Rainbow went down on us the other day. We was able to track down the part and fix it ourselves, but the part was still 43936. But we did get that up and running on our own. Water's been working really hard on vacuum valves out, getting ready for boiler to keep moving with the valve and fire hydrant replacement. We did have also a gas valve go bad in the furnace at Community Hall, which has been replaced by, Axie has got it replaced. It was, first started out about $500, but he said he got it cheaper, so I haven't got to final on it yet. So, and then the project on Beetle Street's still probably two to three weeks out. He's waiting on some other approval and some parts.
Is that the crane?
No, column.
Talked to him today, actually. Doug, he got the concrete structures word. He's waiting for the shop crews to come in. I'm gonna double-check him, but once he gets them in, he's gonna hit it full bore.
Yeah, he said it'd probably be at least two weeks, if not a little bit more. So, and then the pole on Market Street, talked to Aaron Day today, and he's not sure. He's waiting on the information back, but that is gonna be considered a cosmetic move. So ATT may come back with a cost of move.
A cosmetic, when you have a pole in the darn sidewalk, they call that cosmetic?
So he's not 100% sure, but he wanted to give us the heads up.
Ugly, not attractive.
The ATT may come back with that.
Well, who has told you that?
Aaron Day from Structure Point.
Okay.
So he, they haven't yet, but he wanted to give heads up.
Well, either they take it out or we'll cut the damn thing off.
Yeah.
I mean, that's our options. We're not gonna have a pole in our sidewalk.
That's all I'm doing.
You know, we might refer that to legal counsel when Bill comes in. I can't imagine how we would lose saying it's cosmetic when it's in the sidewalk.
They're in a right-of-way. I mean, do they have anything in writing that gave them permission to be in the right-of-way?
Ay yi yi yi, I know.
That's, that's a, that's been a touchy subject for years. Whose poles are they? Who's this?
That would predate me, though. I mean...
Yeah, it goes way back. That pole's old.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it can't be left there. I mean, no.
So it's not cosmetic. Cosmetic's where we just want to change it, because it's not, you know, pleasing to us.
Exactly.
There you go. I like, I like that answer.
All right, well, yeah, I'd be happy to.
But that was just heads up.
We'll see what, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, so, and then I did go to the welding shop today. They are drilling the holes for the lights for the parking lot. So we should have them hopefully tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday. So if that's the case, we'll get them up right away and everything. So we did get an update on that. And then we finally got the streetlight order for the regular streetlights in town. They'll be getting on them right away. All the ones on 41 that we can fix have been fixed, so... And then that's all I have. If you got any questions other than a few things here that we need to...
Oh, a couple questions. You know, about a year ago, we did a, so I believe we installed flow meters and some lift stations? You know, I assume we're monitoring those and collecting things?
They write them down every day.
Okay.
We have a chart, and I've got charts. I got folders down there every day.
Have we put that in a spreadsheet yet?
No, I have not.
Who do you have work on spreadsheets?
I've been, I've actually got, Tim Honaker has been doing some computer work for me. He's pretty good at it and...
Well, yeah, we ought to get that in a spreadsheet. I mean, the objective is try to figure out what lift station's getting most stormwater during a, during a heavy rain event. And so we can figure out what areas town to look for infiltration and whatnot. Yeah, I was just curious. We hadn't talked about it a while. But yeah, I want to see if you can get that computerized in a spreadsheet and we can have some nice graphs and whatnot. That'd be, that'd be fun. Okay, Ipoh, you know, we haven't had a meeting for a while with them. I think they come out a lot quarterly.
This meeting was one set for March.
Yeah, I was looking to see if they had a pole replacement. Have you seen a pole replacement schedule?
Not yet. They did walk, Brett and Chris walked, went to a drive-through and they picked out several poles today that Ipoh's gonna be getting on. Some of them are, a lot of work on them, so Ipoh will be doing it instead of us trying to...
Yeah, and I know they're probably still working. Have you heard anything about Sill Street to Red Bud Hill?
No, they still have not come back with anything on that yet.
Okay, okay. Electrical meter inventory, have we, have you guys, we talked last week about the meters? Or transformers, I'm sorry, transformers.
Transformers, yes. That's something I was gonna ask for here.
Okay, okay. I guess that's it. Yeah, Doug and I spoke briefly last week about transformers and I think he has more information.
Yeah, I got, well, one is, is the trans, some of the smaller transformers are gonna be picked up, taken. They'll go through them and give us the price of what it costs to rebuild them, which is quite a bit cheaper than buying new. So they'll come pick them up and they'll give us the price before they do it and everything. And then the transformers you're talking about, we, the 300 KVA is what McDonald's will have to have. We have one of them that we will use there, then we will not. That'll be it. So we're asking to go ahead and get one of them at the cost of $24,165, which we'll bill that to McDonald's, because that then...
Should I replace one in inventory?
Yes, this, then once we use that, this one comes in, we'll have one sitting.
That's, I was gonna say, how long's lead time on that? Eight months?
Yeah, probably six, eight months, he said, at least.
Well, I would just suggest we have two in inventory. The lead time on these things has been out there for a while. The supply chain scenario is probably not gonna get any better, perhaps worse. I just recommend we have a little extra of transformers from what we normally carry, just...
Is that a motion?
Well, yeah, I, okay, I'll make a motion. I'm not sure what the quantity would be. I mean, definitely the 300 kilovolt?
300 KVA. And that's for, that'd be for like McDonald's and probably...
But the other transformers, I don't know. I assume we use the smaller ones more.
We got 150 KVA that he's wanting to, that supplies O'Reilly's, Family Dollar, well, Benjamin's here. They're at $21,500 and we'll need one.
Do we have any right now?
I believe we have one.
Yeah, I would, I would, Long Beach, we do. I know it's quite...
I think, I think you said we have one of these and we're getting a backup one, or this is the backup one. So we might need two of them also.
Well...
If that's what you wanted, have two of them sitting there.
Will you?
They probably won't get cheaper.
Well, they will get cheaper and the time span could get longer, lead time. So, yeah, I think you need to have a little extra and we need to secure them, which we talked about from... So we have the 300, we have the 150.
Yeah.
What about, what's the small ones?
That will be the 225 KVA, 25 KVA, and a 10 KVA. That's the ones that get ready to send out. We have some of them. I don't, I didn't bring my sheet that has all of them on there, but these will be sent out to be rebuilt. Three-phase switch at $18.95 is what they'll cost to rebuild them.
Eighteen thou?
Eighteen hundred, I'm sorry.
Oh, I like that. Eighteen hundred. That's better.
Get a bunch of that.
Yeah, but yeah, the other transformers, they'll, they'll give us a price before we...
Well, it's okay. I guess my motion would be, be the 300 and the 150 to have two in inventory. I know it's quite an investment, but they'll be there when we need them and little insurance.
Yeah, and then I'll come back with these with a price.
One each or two each?
Well, we normally keep one. So we're gonna basically, the one we're using McDonald's will be replaced. We're gonna buy an extra one there. So we'll have two. And then the 150, we have one now?
I'll have to double-check. I was thinking, this one here, I wrote need for a backup, so we may not have one.
We'll find out. I think you should have...
So you want us to have two sitting there? Is that what you want?
Well, I think so, folks. It's, it's good policy to have a couple extra. I believe. I don't know, any comments? Any comments before I make the motion? Somebody wanna? Okay, I guess I did make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, then the other thing I got is...
Aye.
Sorry. And then the one other thing is, is the lights on 41, that takes a complete rebuild kit to fix them. They're getting old. So we usually only get two or three, but this time I don't even get a price for six this time they come in. Then we got two or three others that are bad.
The electrical rebuild thing?
Yeah, they'll go to, they go to LED.
Oh.
Two. And they, they look the same, but they use a lot less energy. But to get six of those kits, we're looking at $4,203.
I'll make that motion. That's not really as much.
Give her a second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
So that's all I have. Thanks.
Brianna?
I don't know. I don't have a whole lot of project updates. Pretty much submitted from a couple of weeks ago. The water inventory, I did just get an email from a guy, we're eligible to apply for $10,000 for Phase 2, which Troy, you might have, or go more, you know, you got me started on that first one. So we got that first grant for the initial process, but now the second one's open for an additional $10,000, so I'll...
I think that's for identification, for vacuuming, probably, as you get up to $10,000 for that.
Yeah, I, I just got the email from him today, but I'll look through that.
I think there's a very short window for that one.
It's due the 29th.
Okay, but I think I heard that there's gonna be another one this summer too.
Okay, okay.
So I think that is...
For the same thing?
Yeah, but that's, that's, this is separate from the inventory. This is from what I understand it.
There's Starbury Lift Station, Doug totally completed there.
We're totally completed.
So everything's good to go.
We have it locked. We got it secured.
Well, I mean, it's, we put a new lock on it, but we haven't locked it. When the trash service starts coming, he'll, we'll have to give him a key or something, because he's gotta be able to get in there to get the ducts.
Oh, okay.
Is it repelled?
Well, I just, so he has to get inside the building where the...
Yeah, the drive-through thing's inside the building. It's closed up now because, you know, the heat, a lot of times in the summer, it's left open. The overhead doors, ventilation, but, yeah, I mean, if you want it locked, we'll have to supply them.
I don't know. I mean, I suppose it could be unlocked. It's just a expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah, exactly. But we did switch the lock and it does match the rest of the locks, so we can lock it, if that's what you guys want. Like I said, we'll have to supply them with a key once they start doing it.
Okay.
So however...
I don't know. Bill, what, what do you think? Bill, you're our security guy.
Well, it sounds like if, I mean, it sounds like if you're worried about ventilation, I've not looked at the building, but it sounds like if you lock it up and you're not gonna have that ventilation, you may end up running into something where you're destroying the machine or having a fire.
Usually in the summertime, the overhead door is open.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a short of a fence or something.
Yeah, it's...
It'd be hard.
Well, we'd not have trouble. I don't, that's not, trust me, if you go out and visit, it's not a place you want to go.
You don't wanna go there, do you? No.
Don't claim the thing you wanna steal.
Yeah.
Doug, assuming they installed it correctly, the ventilation should be on a timer to run six times an hour, so while it still may smell bad in there, it should be getting the, if it was installed correctly. Can't say I tested it when I was there.
You here?
Oh, it's you, Max, next.
You all right?
I was just gonna, Brandy, touch on that inventory to see where you guys were, because we're down to 10 months on that.
Doug and Tony are working on it. Doug or Tony's keeping some records, so they're kinda gonna work together on, and work with 120 water on it.
Yeah, we're meeting with Bailey Stevens. He's gonna do a webinar with us to walk Tim and Scott and I, do exactly what they want. So when we enter it, we're entering it correct and it doesn't come back yet. So we'll, I believe it's next week we're gonna meet with her.
I was gonna sneak up on you and do a little crap, so...
She said it's pretty simple, but I figured we'd be right instead of the cash.
I thought I just wanted...
Yeah, so, yeah.
Double check.
Is that all you have, Troy?
That is all I have.
Park, you got any old business?
Oh, just a few. Uh, yeah, let's see, the, uh, I, I, I went to that West Central Solid Waste District meeting a little week or so ago. They had their annual report, uh, it's, uh, you might wanna see one. Um, yeah, it, uh, uh, did she get ahold of you about, did you get an email from the gal over there?
Got stuff in the mail.
Yeah, yeah, Jay, I, you, uh, something about getting sworn in, you might have to, okay, okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Do you have any solid, solid waste?
But yeah, yeah, just, just, uh, some, some hi- highlights. It, it costs four dollars, sixty-three cents per person last year in Park County for solid waste, uh, uh, services. The county contributes point two-five, two dollars, two hundred and five cents per person and, uh, the rest of that came out of capital reserve. It was ninety thousand, four hundred and thirty-one. They're slowly working down that reserve. There's around five hundred thousand left. Eventually the cost will go up a little bit every year is how that is planned and a budget, about twenty-five cents increase every year to the county as the capital reserve gets used up. So, uh, we did that, uh.
We recycle the most.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, we send quite a bit. Um, the, uh, where am I? Here, ready two-point-oh grant for East Side Square. We had some follow-up questions, which was good, I'm told, and, uh, those were submitted, uh, just about the, 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 uh, the brick and, and, you know, finished surface and all that. And basically, we just indicated that, uh, you know, they, they will be pavers, which are made out of concrete and, uh, yeah. Uh, the, uh, Regional Sewer District, we, uh, had a Zoom meeting last week. I think I sent an email out to everybody about that. You know, just, uh, originally with, originally wasn't gonna be a district, but we have to do a district because can't go four miles beyond city limits for sewer. So it's gonna be in RSD, our Regional Sewer District, and we would, uh, be the processor for the wastewater from that. At the next meeting, I believe on three, four, Cindy Todd and Dylan Lebermont from Western Virginia are gonna be here to talk more about that. Uh, so something to look forward to in a couple of weeks. Uh.
She's gonna have more paperwork for us on that too. I talked to her earlier. She's given some email on some stuff.
Yeah, uh, comp plan, I know we talked about it last time, um, refresh my memory, Brandy, where are we? We, we're gonna apply again.
We're going to reapply, but we're gonna do the survey as.
Yeah, survey, and we, I know we talked about trying to have a public meeting with some nice pictures and stuff. Uh, well, I didn't, I'm not sure. Well, I think it's a good way to get public input and have a form letter there.
Give out swag.
We'll give out some swag. Yes, swag's always good. Um, if we could do that, I think it would be very beneficial for the comp plan. I'd love to hear back from some residents about.
Pretty much gonna be essential if we have the public's.
Well, that's, that's where we scored low and, and I think it's, it's just a good thing to, to do. Uh, so I don't know. I, I, Structure Point did our, our work on that thing, I believe, and you might get ahold of the folks there in that department and see if, uh, you know, they could put together a presentation for us to get the public in and, uh, try to get us some, some good input for our next application.
Free pizza.
Free pizza, there we go. Uh, so the, uh, uh, last thing, I'm not sure, you know, Stormwater Board meets next, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday at five o'clock. We, and it's kinda ties, we, we had a preliminary engineering report from, uh, DES for, on the sewer and, and we got that back. We will be talking about that at that meeting, uh, because it impacts whatever the stormwater does on that. Um, so to show you know, i- it's, uh, I won't go into more detail now on, but that is gonna be discussed there. Um.
Suspense?
Yeah, a lot of suspense. I'm building suspense. I, I think, oh, I need a new, I need a new key. Got that on my list. Um, I think that's it, David.
You wanna talk about your street, the street sweeper?
Oh, well, yeah, I guess so. We, we did sign the, the contract for the, uh, sweeper. Uh, first payment would be due a year from this July. We probably won't get that until about that time. Uh, it's a five-year, five-year, uh, payment process. There you go. Yeah, um, thanks. So, yeah, expensive piece of equipment. I believe we're gonna set up a separate fund to fund some, put some money in there, fund that and, um, yeah, I don't know if there's anything else to share about it, but, uh, exciting to get a, uh, our first new street sweeper in the history of Rockville and, uh.
We'll have to have a parade.
We should have a parade. We could put it in parades. Sweep, we could have it at the end of the parade and sweep up after the parade. Uh.
I know we already voted in the last meeting for that purchase, but would somebody make a motion? Just, I ran the paperwork, Nick's reviewed the contract. Um, just all the contract leasing documents, just a motion to.
I'll move on it.
Paul, favorite. You done?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, new business, I, I do wanna bring something up. We don't have to spend a lot of time off tonight, but, um, weight limits for our streets, uh, especially Erie and Anderson.
I saw a big, huge semi on Howard Avenue the other day. I think it was going to the, well, I know it was going to the high school.
Yeah. Well, we need to, uh, I mean, do something about it. I mean, put better signage up, do something with it. Um, I know Bill said they've had some complaints on Erie Street trying to make the corner at Stark. Obviously, they come down, uh, try to make the corner either Virginia or Hughes. They rubbed a pole on Hughes and, um, Martin. I think last Saturday or two Saturdays ago, um, that guy actually backed up, dropped his trailer, went around the block, hooked back up on his trailer and went back out to forty-one, so, but it's getting kinda bad. I mean, I know the county closed, what, was it two hundred, two hundred north to them?
Right. I don't remember exact roads, but you said the road they're allowed to go down, was it four fifty or?
Four fifty.
All the other roads are closed to them besides that road. They're trying.
They're only allowed to go to a hundred east and then to the Sawmill.
Yeah, they're trying to designate where they're supposed to go. It's just people aren't cooperating. Marshall closed their main road to them too, so. So they're supposed to be going down four fifty, but they're just not.
How do they get to the lumberyard?
Huh?
How do they get to the lumberyard on Marshall?
They go across on four fifty and then come south on it to get there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it ended at a hundred, not all the way to Marshall Road.
No, I think it goes through. There's, they have a road that goes through if it's not four fifty. I may have access to that road once on my phone. But they did, they designated one as a pad. It's the road that, when you go on Marshall Road and you go that right before you get to the town of Marshall and there's those S-curves, whatever that road is that goes to the left if you're going northbound, that's the road they're designated on.
Four fifty, yeah.
Yeah, and it connects into Marshall Road. So they're supposed to be taking that. They're just not. So it's more of an enforcement thing than, I mean, it's hard to monitor that road constantly, you know, I'm assuming, so.
Can the business owners be, can we request that they sat on?
So they were given information, the lumberyard was, to distribute to the people, asking them not to do that, to use this as operational thing, but we can't hold them liable if they're not the one violating.
I mean, I know their GPSes are probably taking them that way, but we need something.
My idea, just, I don't know how much signage you have, but on Anderson Street, right when you're coming off forty-one would be the place to have your sign, I would think. But just my thought process, but.
Well, we put it there on the end of the dollar, the dollar, you know, 'cause we have to allow them there.
Yeah.
So that's why it was put on that pole there.
Gotcha. It's more of an enforcement thing.
Just like, I believe up here on Market Street, we got, was it fifteen ton, one, but we had to put it back so they could get to behind G and M Variety and all that stuff. So we had to place it back there. So we can do it, but I hate there's limits of, you know, we gotta allow them so far because of businesses that are already there.
You're right.
Well, there's something to think about so we can, you know, get something in place here.
Well, we're gonna hack once South Market project's finished. I mean, we have, there's a ton of semi traffic that comes up terms and goes in front of the office here, but you're gonna be running on a new road and that corner section of new bricks. So, I don't know. We might look at doing something prior to that completion of that project so that they're not.
Yeah, we got a trucker that must live down on Dewey or somewhere, 'cause he comes down on Pennsylvania and goes down College turns on Isabel and it's a logging truck. I don't know who it is. I've never seen them up close, but I did see him go in there, so. He was empty the other day, but I'm sure he's been in over the load on the.
City of Clinton designates truck routes and, and enforces ordinance and make money off of it, but it's, it's, again, I mean, you have limited law enforcement. You know, like, they can only be so many places.
But, well, not only the weight in town, we just, most of our corners can't accommodate the semi. We end up having to place signs all the time. I mean, like where you're talking about by bills, how many times we put up signs there. Um, Erie and thirty-six, we finally put the street sign on a utility pole because it was about a once-a-month ordeal.
They, they were backing down Anderson Street from about Parks House all the way up over the hill by Dollar General the other day, so. It was just waiting for somebody to hit them.
Then like Howard Avenue, we gotta allow them into the school for their delivery, for their cafeteria.
They also have a trucking program through the school too, Howard Avenue, there, there in the school does.
Yeah, so they gotta be so far, you know, be able to get down to.
Well, okay. Uh, another thing, I went to a stormwater conference a couple of weeks ago. I'm gonna go do another one Wednesday. Um, just wanna talk to you guys about it real quick. I'm gonna go to the next storm board meeting, um, since it's probably catering here. Um, some of the stuff that they were doing is, is, has to do with permitting. Um, and I never thought about it honestly, as long as I've been in construction, but, I mean, every time you pull a truck, tractor out in the road and you're swinging mud and dirt, that stuff's going somewhere when it rains or we plow the streets or whatnot, so. It's getting in storm sewers and, I mean, this was Hendrix County. I'm going to Tippy, Tippy Canoe County also. Um, I mean, they're gonna start cracking down on this. I didn't know if this is something you guys would be interested in approaching, uh, with builders and, you know, people in town that have projects.
Well, I, I think it's a good idea, David. I know over in my area, we had, we, I've seen that happening and in fact, uh, the trailer was left, well, at one time there's a dumpster left in the street for a while, and, uh, the, the other time there's a trailer and that's something you shouldn't be parking your dumpsters and trailers in streets unless it's just temporary for the day. But, you know, it's not good. But yeah, the, 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 uh, debris left in the street, but, but what good grief, we have a thing regarding grass and so why wouldn't you address the, uh, the dirt? Um, it does go somewhere and.
Well, I mean, you know, contractors probably ought to be using coconut logs and stuff around basins and, I mean, we don't enforce that at all, so.
Who's gonna enforce it? Who's gonna enforce it?
Well, we, there's, there's a job going on.
I mean, there should be, if we install a permit process, obviously, I mean, we can either have Doug or Bill.
Well, I was thinking about Josh. He's a site inspector. He, he does some of the, uh, work with the, uh, uh, building permits. So I would think that may be a logical individual to have following up on the, uh, stormwater control and a construction site. Um, yeah.
Hey Nick, have you ever had a discussion about the county maybe, could, would they contract out maybe with Josh for some home inspections?
I've not, never had that.
I'm getting more and more people and they want me to condemn houses.
Right. Uh, I'd assume that's probably not something in your bailiwick necessarily, unless it's a health code, a health department.
It's like, yeah, I mean, if, if it's considered unhealthy, but it's a pretty darn slippery slope in some areas.
Yeah, I know that I'm, I mean, we've had some conversations about ordinance related things in the county, but not as far as like building inspection wise.
Might be worth a conversation because I'm, I had five calls last week.
Tell the powers that be.
Well, I'm gonna let Brandy talk about the next couple of things, kind of new business.
Um, yep, just head on there, but tomorrow actually we'll be celebrating Rockville's Founder's Day celebration, um, up at the parking lot, the new parking lot. Um, and have our clock dedication there. Um, it starts at eleven AM and there will be some just refreshments inside the thirty-six. Um, depend, we didn't, probably weren't sure what the weather was gonna be like, but looks like it might be halfway decent day. Um, so that is tomorrow at eleven. Um, of course, everybody is welcome to attend that event. And then, um, the only other thing I had on here is that I met with, um, a couple of the Main Street members on Saturday, um, on some ideas for trying to look toward improving our holiday before, um, for this year. So we've looked at some cost-sharing events. We'll have some more information, but we just wanted to get together and see what everyone's ideas were. Um, Kevin was there, so he may have some more input, but, um, one discussion was with the new, um, of course, South Market and then the potential looks for the other side of Jefferson Street and improving the appearance of the square. Um, one of the ideas were to take down the colored lights that hang, 'cause they'll have to come down anyway with the project, but moving those down to the Chakwa, maybe hanging those underneath there. That way they wouldn't have to be taken down and put back up for the year, but that would be one of the many things that we've got in the works, making the park a little more festive.
Do we do anything with the light poles at the park? We don't do anything for Christmas dinner, do we?
No, but we're trying to put a.
Yeah.
Ideas together to make.
Well, that's good. You can get the park board in on that.
Yeah, make it look a little bit better, so.
Um, well, good idea.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got some ideas. We've got some funding. We've got some cost-sharing ideas out there. So, um, with our beautification project, we are at the last, um, full week, like the twenty-eighth is the last day for that, so we're getting close to meeting that goal.
Where we at on that?
We're at ten thousand, one fifty.
Ten thousand?
I thought it was twelve, one fifty.
No, ten.
What do you need?
We need twelve-five. So we're pretty close, um, to that, but that potentially will open up some more, um, funds for beautification that we can not just landscaping banners, but open up some more ideas for lights and stuff throughout the town.
Okay.
So, we're working together on that too.
Yay.
Any public comment? Park?
Oh, one more thing. I don't wanna drop it. We had so much fun with it last time. Uh, you know, bathrooms, I believe you're getting quote, getting quotes?
Yes.
Okay, good. So maybe next meeting or so, we might have something to talk about.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually talk to him again today. We're gonna meet the next day or two. He wants to do some measuring and.
Okay, that's at the park and at the.
Yeah, that's the park, yes.
Okay, good.
And then, uh, I know the park board met recently too. I don't know if the two of you, or either of you have anything to add? Um, we did get a rules, rule sign ordered for the dog parks. We'll have some dog park rules. Um, last meeting, we talked about increasing the lifeguard wage from ten to twelve dollars an hour and I'll be looking at putting that advertisement out there starting soon, um, just so we can make sure we're.
I looked back and I think last, it was in my notes last year and the year before. It was like February sixteenth, I think, was the first time I saw.
Usually try to start pretty, pretty early. Um, the target date that they do have for opening noises memorially, so that will be on May twenty-seventh this year. Um, and then they will have their meeting, their next meeting, March twenty-first.
I copied you on those minutes, didn't I?
Yep, I've got them. Yep, thank you. You did really good.
Thanks. That's my one and only time I draw the line.
And cemetery board, I don't know, do you have any?
You can't listen.
No, we don't. Not, uh, not that I know of. Kev, anything new in cemetery?
No, we kinda, I'm pretty excited for what's gonna be new, so.
Okay, yeah.
Look at that slide for a while.
Okay. Uh, I do wanna say one thing. Uh, I wanted to thank Keith Fisher for cleaning the sidewalks. Uh, he does forty-one. I think he does the square. Appreciate that, that he does that, so.
I thought that was him, but I couldn't tell. He was curved and that one, but.
So give him an attaboy when you see him, see him. And, uh, any public comment?
Just a couple things. Um, on your sediment issue, there's a lot of rules for like Hendrix and stuff. They got wheel washes and stuff. They get really cost prohibitive for the contractors, which obviously just gets passed on to citizens. They make, uh, bags that go on the inlets. They literally sit in there, you set the rim back on, construction's done, you take it out, you flip it over, all the junk comes out. That may be something for the town to consider. Super cheap. I don't know if contractor does it, Doug does it, but, you know, like a hundred dollars a bag and they're reusable, so. I think that would cut down a lot. Um, an update on the water project. Idim came back with another round of comments. They told us to remove an air relief valve from this exact location. Two rounds later, put it back because it has to be there, so we're having a lot of fun with them. End dot, we've effectively got approval. They're just staggering the fee. Uh, don't have any problems with them. Now, put on my other hat. Now, I put on my other hat. Gil Run OLC is a local in-town company. My father, Kirk Gil, and I, we, uh, buy kind of rundown homes in town. We've got eleven roofs now. Um, tearing down a little bit, building back up, making nice affordable rentals. I've just got some sheets here to pass around. We are nearing the finished remodel for the house behind the Ritz Theater. You've probably seen it. We adjusted the roof. We've done the entire interior. It's split in two. One of the items being along the front of the house, there's a large tree that kind of overhangs the house and it's not structurally sound in any way. We would take it down or trim it, but it is within the town right of way, therefore, I'm here to either ask you guys take it down and we can help you clean it up or trim it.
It's really a little bit of the sidewalk too, hasn't it? Hasn't it really a little bit of the sidewalk?
Yeah, the sidewalks, the sidewalks destroyed, which is kind of my second point, but just kind of asking for something to be done with the tree as far as that goes.
Have you looked at it, Doug?
I know what tree he's talking about. I can take a better look at it. I mean...
Kind of comes out of metal or that one comes off. It is kind of a...
So, what kind of funding do we have in the, uh, sidewalks?
Well, we just fix them when we, we, we have one we want to fix. I mean, we, we, we specified some percent, but we just, every time we have sidewalk in a project, we do it. What do you, where are you going with that?
Well, just if we remove this tree, I don't know how much damage we're going to do. I mean, I know sidewalks.
Sidewalks already.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess. Well, yeah, we could certainly look at redoing that stretch there.
I guess on that note, so we have it split from east to west. So, the east parks on the right side of the house. The west parks in the front. I don't know, it kind of is in the street. It's kind of a nice order, to be quite honest. We'd be willing to work with you guys on regrading the front to, one, make it accessible to whoever rents the home, and two, get them off the street. You know, make it look a little nicer and then also help, you know, pour concrete up to our steps. We'd be happy to help with that, but...
We'll get your tree alley. Let's get the tree out and we'll evaluate what we have.
We've put a lot into the house and if we can help you guys help us, that would be phenomenal for both parties, I think.
And water meter.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, being a duplex, I had talked to Doug about it and he shot me down, but...
We, we don't add two water meters to the house. We've turned, I've turned down the Amish. I've turned down a guy down here on South on Market Street. We, we stopped that years ago because people wanted them for gardens, wanted them for this and that, so they just come out and said, one household gets one meter. So, we, we turn it down, but it's one house. It's one, so.
I guess...
You just got one meter down with all those big ones down there?
Down here, yeah.
One meter?
Yeah.
Holy...
Not one, there's...
One meter for each.
Building.
Building. So, yeah, so they have to...
With Sugar Tree Alley being tore up to put in the new one, I guess it would be a pretty easy addition to add on another meter. And if it's my understanding, you guys charge per meter, so it would be, I guess, additional revenue for the same thing. It could be, I don't know what the fee is. If it's twenty bucks, you could be getting forty instead of twenty for the next forty years.
What's it cost to put in a new meter?
Hard minimum's twelve hundred.
So, if we pay for the meter?
So, but this falls back. If we let you, then we got to start doing it everywhere that I've turned down.
So, we have no duplexes in Rockville? I have...
Chris is...
I mean...
Well, if they, if they build it, I mean, that's, well, that one's been there for, is the thing. And like I said, we've turned down, it's just something they started a long time ago, because like I said, people are wanting a second meter for this, second meter for that.
Well, I, I guess it goes down to what's, what's a person wants a meter for, Doug, I would think. I mean, yeah, if you want one for this and one for, say, one for pool and one for garden, one for house. But when you have, you know, two separate property, well, one property split in two different living units, um...
Are you guys the ownership group for both living units?
Yeah, okay.
I got three electric meters. I got two gas meters.
We would have a minimum charge on each meter. I mean, you know, it wouldn't be like, I understand if...
You guys just set it there.
I understand if you said, you know, oh, well, if somebody wanted, I just want to water my garden, but I don't want to pay. Well, if it's a separate meter, it's going to be the minimum charges, which is going to be, you know, a hundred for that household, a hundred for that household. So, the, the minimum charges. So, in the event that somebody wanted or tried to get by with one doing a garden, that wouldn't work with us because the minimum charges for water and sewer cannot fly.
David, because that's what, when, when the Ritz actually owned the house and we were actually renting it out, it caused a lot of problems because, A, we had probably our lower echelon clientele in there and the water bill would get out of, get out of hand because they're fussing about, well, wait. You know, she takes four showers, and so it's just a real big hassle when you have two apartments. Um, and I can attest the fact that Kirk has, has increased his, the tax base for Park County considerably compared to what it was.
I understand Doug's concerns, but I, I don't, I don't think I have an issue with it, but I think...
I dug the hole at Erie Street. When I did that one, I just came and set it in. I'll, I'll dig the hole there and we need to tear out that sidewalk anyway. I'll clean it.
Say, we're happy to work with the town anyway. We can help them, but obviously, we can't overstep our bounds by any means.
Well, it seems rational.
Okay, okay, unlike Michigan though, we're going to be tearing up a new road, so are we going to?
We got to get into the road?
Yeah, with the water mains out front. So, we'll be tearing up Michigan Street. And I know on wastewater, we have started now billing them for the repair of the...
Well, now, why? Where's the current meter at? It's in on the property, backside of South Front.
Could we not tap off of Sugar Tree?
I don't know exactly what runs down that. They're getting, I, I think that's one that's getting ready to get a new water line, so.
Which is why I bring it up. I mean, if we're going to...
Well, yeah, there is a water line on Sugar Tree. We, I've heard that there's, yeah, there's a valve at the e...
Yeah.
East end. We'll look at some options. Let's look at the options. I mean, it makes sense to split that thing. I mean, yeah, if somebody comes in, this isn't going to happen often. Not this situation. I mean, and if it does, if somebody wants to pay for the darn thing, and the long-term return to the town is definitely there because you have separate charge for that meter.
I don't know how you turn, let them have two, this person have two, and then tell this person, nah, we don't like that idea.
Well, it depends on what the situation is.
Well, they're willing to pay for it either way.
Yeah, I don't think you can...
Well, okay.
So, you're going to tell a person just because they want to, they want to pay sewer for their garden, they can't have it.
Well, that's, that, we don't...
I mean, they're going to pay the same price they are.
This is not the same, that's different. This is that living unit that you have two different residents, two different, two different homes, two different families per se. Whereas if it's just a, somebody trying to, to, to cut down their bill to put in a, and I'm not sure if they do the math on that. They're going to like that because that monthly water bill is not cheap, just the minimum. I think they, they aren't doing their math all the way.
Well, I'm not arguing math. I'm just arguing that you're going to have people come in and want it.
Well...
Well, we could, I, I mean, we could change ordinances for that, I think, anyways, but...
I mean, living units is one thing. Garden, uh, 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 you know, somebody doing that for a different, like, that scenario is different from living unit. That's how I should go.
This has been pretty much a gut job, so it's, it's, it's almost like a new bill.
We say some wood. I just know that, I used to have them in Crawfordville and you, I've all been there to monitor them. They have their windows half open, air conditioner's cranked up. I'm paying for it. They don't care about the water, they run. Let her run, baby. Let her run. You know, no skin in game there.
And then turn, you know, I got to raise rent two hundred dollars because some kids playing in the sprinkler, whereas the other one's conserving her water. So, just having to monitor them just doesn't turn out well. I have to gouge the rent prices just to accommodate the risk factor.
Well, you, you don't know what kind of user is going to be in there until they're there, is the thing, you know.
No, like I said, I, I don't have an issue with it. I understand what you're saying, Doug, but...
Well, it's just what we've done, so I guess that's why I told them, so if you guys want to change it, then...
It's up to you guys wherever you think, you know, you guys want to discuss it or you want to table it or, I mean, you guys...
I would table it. I think if you're going to give them a yes, then we better have a plan of what, how we're going to deal with everybody else that comes to request it.
So, where are you guys at on your apartment or on your duplex?
It's drywall's up. We're getting ready to do the floors and then we'll finish it up.
When's the water project coming?
It's whenever they get...
He's got a one mark, so I don't know if it's coming.
I mean, I would hate to miss the opportunity to tie in to the new water.
So, you don't know what's running down Sugar Tree, Sugar Tree?
I think it's two and I think.
I've looked at, you know, the...
I'd have to double check. I don't know right off and...
If it would help, I think we could do an administrative split on the parcel. If it's two parcels, then you could say, okay, now it gets two meters, just to not rump any feathers, you know. I don't want to be a special exception case by any means, but...
Right, we want something that makes sense and, and, and does so down the road. Uh... Well, Doug, why don't you work, look into this a little more and see what the options are and we'll try to come up with a solution as quick as we can. We're two weeks, what are we, two weeks from the night for our next meeting? Where's that going, how's that going to hurt you guys as far as timeline?
Oh, we're a month away from having, you know, the paint on and stuff like that, so we're good.
Okay. Yeah, we meet March fourth.
So, we come back our regular session two weeks from now or whatever it is. I don't know how this month falls.
March fourth, I think.
Yeah, I think Boyer, once he gets done tomorrow, he's going down behind our pier and tie them in and then he's headed out to, I believe, Anderson and Hickory Treatment and all that. So, it'll be a little bit before he gets to, because I asked him to get some of that done out there before we start, start Anderson's project. So, it'll be a while before he gets, I believe, at least a few weeks anyway.
Do we have any issues on Anderson as far as, that you know of, sewer water?
None that I know of. I mean, we got some poles, utility poles we're going to have to move and stuff, but I don't know any issues, um... I don't think, um, your, uh, dad's not going to need a sewer tap and water tap. Did you ever find that out?
I don't think so. I, well, once you start talking the cost, and they don't even know, it's a concrete floor through that whole clinic.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not...
They don't, I, I, where are you going to tap in, Dad? Uh, he doesn't, I mean, I, I, I don't see that happening. I think during negotiations with the lease, uh, the leasee to, uh, where's the lease or I always get turned around, uh, to work out a split on utility costs. I mean, how much water is an eighty-eight-year-old fellow going to use?
Exactly, I mean...
Not much. So, yeah, I think we're good.
Okay. Yeah, that, no, now, I don't know the any issues we have there. We should be good. You know, they're upgrading the valves and some hydrants and then they're running the main down by Black Mill and all that, so that'll only be taken care of, so.
We have good spring cleanup days.
Um, yeah, you guys cited, oh, you're talking about the town.
Town, we usually do it on the, do we do Sunday?
I, I looked today. I was thinking, I hadn't had a chance to come over and talk to Randy, like, either the twenty-seventh of April or the fourth of May or something like, is what I was thinking.
I mean, I don't care.
Okay. I'll eat you a date tomorrow for sure. I was going to ask the guys for availability around that time, so.
A lot of activities going on in the county on the weekend, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of April.
That's probably probably can, isn't it?
I probably, um, it's free for rendezvous. It's a hunting festival.
Is there any other public comment?
I'll make a motion for adjournment barring any further comment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.